All right, we're going to call this special meeting of the Board of Education Order. Rise for the Pledge of Independence.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got a motion to approve the meeting agenda. Ms. Downey is there, second? Ms. Stowe? All those in favor of approving the meeting agenda? Ms. Holson?
Aye.
Great, that passes easier. Thank you. Mr. Scher.
Just a point of information here. I was asking, it's not the Board Secretary, but our Board Assistant, where the documents are for this meeting. And he said he didn't, anyway, there's none printed here. But, so I asked him if it was what was posted. And apparently, it's not posted. So, I think we have a little bit of a legal problem on our hands in that the board members through email or receipt of documents for this meeting that were not posted for the public. And that's problematic. Us to be conducting business on documents that have not been made, that we're in receipt of, that are not available to the public. I can't imagine, I mean, I think we're off into a proper disclosure and a FOIA problem right now.
Well, sir, I'm not so sure I agree because they are actually going to be presented tonight in their entirety on the screen. Also, they'll be made available on the website. We're not taking any votes tonight. This is a discussion item only. It's the first time we're taking this up. So, it wouldn't be taken up as an action item until our meeting next week. So, there'll be plenty of time for those documents to be made available.
I'm not, I don't think we're supposed to be conducting business like that. I mean, just out of curiosity, how did this happen that it didn't get posted?
We can't hear you.
My question was, how did it happen that we're having a meeting with documents that the Board has seen, but they're for the content of this meeting and they're not posted?
Yeah, when we got them late. Come sit, no, sit down here. You can hear them from here. We did get them late last night, and I'm not sure that this is working, but we did get them late last night, emailed them to the Board. They'll be posted tonight after the presentation, which is generally what we do when we have a presentation like a PowerPoint.
They are on your website.
Yeah, that can't be, Tony, I, just with all due respect, I've been on the Board a long time, it's never been our practice. We can't conduct meetings where the Board is in receipt of information and that information has not been made available to the public. If it's something the Board is not in receipt of and the public is getting it at the same time, that's one thing. We can't be in a position where, I, I mean.
It happened with the school time today. I remember that.
It's not, it's not okay that we're conducting meetings like this.
It has happened, so you see what I'm saying.
Right, certainly don't disagree. I think best practice, they should be made available. But these will be posted tonight? Yes. With that, we have a motion on the table to approve the meeting agenda. All those in favor?
You did that.
We did that? We're good. Okay. So, discussion item, Cardinal Stadium. I don't know, Dr. Jones, are you going to kick off?
Actually, we'll start right out with the architect, who's going to be presenting for us tonight with KGND, Russ Davidson.
Happy New Year. Russ Davidson, KGND, approved by partner Eric Carr, also KGND. We have a brief PowerPoint. We're not going to go backwards, we're looking to go forward. I think the Board mentioned at the last meeting that we're in the 20-yard line, looking to get to the, to the end zone. So, we're going to, we're going to try and work on that. So, at your last meeting, you appointed a committee and gave them charge. We've been working through the month of December. There was three, three meetings held, on the 4th, the 10th, and the 18th. The difference between this and the earlier presentations is the scope now includes providing handicap parking and visitor's side bleachers and a building. So, in the committee discussions, which were robust and well-attended, we reviewed options and requirements for handicap parking. The number of 20 came up, and it's important to note that that's treating the activities at the field as their home, and that doesn't include the 13 spaces that are at the high school. So, 20 would be the right amount to have in the proximity of Cardinal Field. We looked at a lot of different building layouts for the home and visitor's side. We also looked at options for connecting to the high school parking lot. And at the conclusion of the last meeting, the committee, many of whom are here tonight, unanimously voted for option three, for consideration of the Board of Ed to be implemented in part or in whole. And this is the drawing of option three, which, you know, again, here's the track and field, which is remaining unaltered at this point. It's the home side bleachers with buildings underneath, which you have seen before. The preferred location for handicap parking is this location right here. The addition of a small entry or ticket kiosk, the visitor's side bleachers, potential location for a visitor's side building, either here or potentially under the bleachers. And then, it was talked about, in the future, you know, this would allow the existing tennis courts to remain right here, you could put the handicap parking in, it wouldn't disturb any tennis courts. And then, at some point, if you go forward with the project, you could have a full connecting driveway to the high school parking lot, but that would require relocation of the eight tennis courts. So, that's the ultimate configuration that was described as option three to the committee, which everyone preferred, basically said, find a way to get there. So, this shows the handicap parking lot, which this, this portion of has 17 ADA spaces, the remainder has three. Some of the preferences to this was, you'd get out of your car, you have a sidewalk to go directly to either side of the bleachers, and that handicapped individuals wouldn't be getting out of their vehicle and going back into a drive lane to get to a, to get to the event. This works out really comfortably from a grading point of view, and many people will remember that at one point, that flat area was actually used for handicap parking earlier for, for Cardinal Stadium. So, it's really just repurposing it. It does have a pile of soil on it that is not contaminated, it's been used as a storage area for soil. The visitor's side bleachers got a lot of discussion. I'm sorry, this projector isn't as clear as we would like, but there's a line that's hard to see here, that runs right through where I'm tracing with the pointer. That's the 100-foot wetlands regulated area. So, the entire visitor's bleachers, including a portion of the track, are in the regulated, regulated area because of this water course. So, anything related to the visitor's bleachers, whether you just replace them, put a building underneath them, or even put a building off to the side, will be subject to wetlands review, as well as the driveway to the high school and the relocation of the tennis courts. So, the home bleachers and visitor's bleachers are much as described earlier, you know, the large press box, the ramp, edges, the stairs up either side. The visitor's bleachers is, are also elevated with the same amount of ramp. So, the front side of the visitor's bleachers has always been proposed to be elevated, and it matches the elevated side of the home bleachers. Again, they're both much closer to the field, so you can have better viewing angles, and handicapped individuals will be able to be up and elevated right next to regular bleacher seats. With the addition of the idea of putting a building on the visitor's side, was a proposed modification to the building under the home bleachers, which allowed us to expand the home team room here to almost 1,400 feet, and provide much-needed storage underneath the other side. You still have the public toilet rooms, family toilet rooms, referees, first aid, small concession for mostly souvenirs, because food will be done from food trucks, and a storage area to support that. The smaller visitor's center building, the standalone version is proposed to be a 30-by-60 building. It has about an 800-square-foot visitor's team room, also has some public accessible toilets, as well as a toilet room that serves a team room, and one vehicle storage bag, which allows you to get some of the larger mowers and things that are used at the field stored right there. There's an alternative, you know, being discussed for putting the building under the visitor's side of bleachers, some prefer this approach. This is the cross-section of the visitor's bleachers with the front elevated. It should be noted, there's also some discussion about exactly where the visitor's bleachers is set, should be planned to allow for expansion of the track at some point in the future, and that will be done, no matter which version goes forward. That's an easy thing to accommodate. But, this was just a study done to see how a building fits under the visitor's bleachers. This is the line of grade, it does fade down, but the building, in order to fit under there, would be submerged below grade, about five or six feet on this side, and about three or four feet on this side. So, you cut an entrance in. It shouldn't be an issue with the water table, but this is in a wetlands regulated area, and that will be something the wetlands agency will want us to, they will, they will want to see alternatives. So, it's good that there's a couple different options on how that can be done, and our suggestion would be that we review that with wetlands to see which one can be most easily approved. Because there was a discussion of connecting the high school parking lot, we had a lot of discussions about, you know, what's a firefighting access road, which needs to be 20 feet wide and 24-ton bridge? So, if you're going to have a firefighting access road, you're getting into a real road. And then, the discussion was, well, if it's 20 feet wide, that's really not adequate for two-way traffic. And the committee really felt that 24 was a reasonable minimum for a road. So, that's what was shown. And then, the more we looked at connecting here or connecting here, we came back to what was in the original option B, which is connect to the drive lanes in the parking lot. You get some additional ADA parking in this case, an area for the bus to drop off. And on the footprint of some of the, one and a half of the tennis courts, the idea to put a practice field there, so you have an area for people to gather before a big event, or you can have a place for teams to stretch and practice before taking on a contest field. And just to revisit, this is a rendering of the bleachers that I think you've seen before, but there's your elevated section. You know, one of the reasons, the stairs are here and the ramp is here is, is the scope of this also involves replacing light fixtures, but not the poles. So, we have to work with the existing pole locations, which is, it's okay, but you wouldn't put them there today if you were doing the bleachers. And then, the view from the back of the bleachers, you can see the small concession stand, the full-service hydraulic elevator up to the walkway from the press box, and that this drive lane here would be restricted access, it's not a parking area, it's for delivering things and for getting food trucks in and out. And there's bollards there preventing vehicles from interfering with pedestrians. So, we've been working hard on costs, we've got feedback from the group on the cost of a bridge. This represents yesterday's version, or today's version of costs. And, you know, we don't have the full spreadsheet that has every line item, because it wouldn't be readable on the screen. Not that this is not readable either, but you may remember that when we were talking about what was originally Phase One, it was about $6.6 million, which did include the visitor's building, and it did include, did not include a road or relocating the tennis courts. Then, a version came up that was priced at around 10.6, and the one that you've just seen, total price is around 11.9. And the first part of that, without the road and moving the tennis courts, would be 8.8 million. And 11.9, I know is a lot of money, but you may remember that the full plan, after it was refined, was 17.5. So, this represents a significant downsizing from the original option B that was proposed and approved by the Board. So, in researching the approvals process, we believe it might be worth considering a slightly different way of dividing the project. We want to talk about that a little bit, and that's what we're calling Part One and Part Two. And the real difference here is moving the visitor's side bleachers and the building for the visitor's team rooms into Part Two. And that's really related to the fact that they're the only part of what had earlier been Phase One that requires a wetlands approval. And that could have a significant impact on the amount of time it takes to get the initial project going. And everyone, I think everyone is completely unified on, we need to get the home side bleachers replaced and back in service as soon as possible, and the work that's related to it. So, this proposal to sort of split things a little differently is for that effect. And it's also important to note that you can ask for approvals for a project, and you don't, you aren't mandated to build it. A wetlands approval, for example, is valid for five years. So, if you, if you went ahead and got things approved, like the driveway to the high school is part of that, you don't have to ask for funding for it, and you don't have to build it right away. But, whether you, whether you ask for funding or not, if it's anticipated, wetlands is going to want to review it as a single project. So, this is just a list of, a summary list of the approvals for the different parts of the project. So, for Part One, you would need the municipal improvement and application, because you're asking for funding. You need a site plan approval from planning and zoning. Because you're at FAR Limited at the high school, you're going to need a zoning variance for the press box and for the buildings underneath the bleachers. You have a very minor change of use for the post-road entry-exit, so there will be a discussion with Connecticut DOT on that. We don't expect that to be a big issue, there's already been some initial discussions with them. You're basically saying it's going to be for deliveries and for handicap parking only, which is exactly what that entry-exit has been used for in the past. So, there shouldn't be any big deal there. Also, all the work proposed in Part One does not impact areas where there's suspected to have contaminated soils. And of course, you'll still need a building permit, you're building buildings. Part Two, you'll need the municipal improvement, because you're going to ask for some portion of that funding, or if not all of it. You'll still need a site plan approval, you'll still need a zoning variance. But the next three are really different. You'll need the, you'll need the wetlands review and approval, and it's important to note that you can't do the wetlands review in pieces. It's an environmental impact, and this is typical with any environmental review, you cannot segment it, they want to view it as a whole. So, all the work with, that's anticipated within the regulated area should be part of one application to wetlands. You also would need to deal with the significant change of use for the post-road entry-exit with Connecticut DOT, because this would include the driveway, and that's likely to be a longer process, it's just a different agency. And also important is because of the bridge location near the water course, this will impact an area that's suspected to have contaminated soils. So, really, for, and of course, you need a building permit. And so, it's really because of those three approvals there in red on the right, that we proposed moving the visitor's bleachers and the visitor's building to that side, so that we don't, so this is just a graphic depiction of that, that shows the blue line here. So, this, everything in this area would be Part One, which is the simpler part to approve, and everything within the wetlands regulated area would be Part Two. And again, you can go for these two approvals simultaneously, we met with planning. You're not going to hide from Part One from Part Two, you're going to show them the whole thing, but you're just going to physically separate the applications. And it's our understanding that, that's been discussed, and planning has no issue with that. But wetlands, understandably, really needs to look at everything with the regulated area of the wetlands at one time. Even if you separate them, they're going to make you join them. So, just parsing the budgets just a little differently, because we moved the visitor's bleachers and the visitor's building, whichever version that is, to the Part Two. That 8.8 would then have 7.6 in Part One, and if you ask for the full funding for Part Two, it would be 4.3. But if you ask for only the visitor's bleachers and the visitor's side, it would be 1.2. So, it's just dividing the numbers a little differently, it's still 8.8 for the work that you wanted this committee to study. So, the possible path forward by that plan, if you so decide, would be prepare two separate and independent applications for Part One and Part Two, but start them both at the same time. It would be really nice if they ended at the same time, but, which is, which is possible, it's just not as likely. The real advantage is this keeps the approvals related to replacing the failed bleachers, Part One, as simple as possible to expedite the work. And that's really the only, that's your big advantage, and it consolidates the more challenging approvals into the Part Two approvals, which is wetlands, traffic, and hopefully, no, but the, the work related to contaminated soils, if there are any. The disadvantages of breaking them into two is it's less efficient, a single set of approvals from a time and money perspective. And it could mean that the visitor's side improvements occur later, resulting in a longer disruption period to the field. But, you know, the other side of that is, maybe the other stuff wouldn't start as soon if you put them together. So, there's a lot of next steps. Obviously, the Board needs to select a design approach and an implementation plan. There's still work to be done on the drawings and specifications to get them, especially the site work, to get them up to about 90% complete. Then, you need to prepare and submit the applications, start the MI process to gain approval of funding. You meet with the Boards and officials to advance applications, and I think the committee did include people from DPW, and, you know, we've met with wetlands and planning, so there's nobody in Town Hall who's unaware of this project at this point. There's usually some revisions and updates to documents required to advance the process. And then, you finalize drawings and get them to bid. Periodically, we will review this with the Board of Ed leadership, including updating budgets. And then, once approvals are final, you issue it for bids and do the construction. The bleachers and the buildings, and most of the work in Part One, I would remind the Board, you've already commissioned up to 60% design. So, that is really well-advanced, and we are, we are prepared to pick it up right where it left off and get Part One going very quickly. That's really our presentation. If you have any questions.
Joe. Russ, I thought that was a great presentation, thank you for that. I think it mostly reflects what the committee has discussed over the last two meetings. I know you've been at this for a long time. I have joined it only a short while ago, so I don't have the history you have, but certainly saw the committee work together, and getting suggestions on how to advance this. The few questions I had, looking at your presentation, you answered in your presentation, so I do appreciate that, thank you. I guess what the questions were, were in our discussions, we talked about having a Phase One and Two, or we'll say the both, the home bleachers and the visitor's bleachers to be one separate project, and possibly have the road another separate project. But you pointed out clearly why the visitor's bleachers should be within the same project as the road, because of the wetlands issues. So, that made clarity, because I know the rest of the committee, we didn't discuss that.
That was new information from a week ago today.
That's great, thanks for that.
We went to Town Hall, because we wanted to come here really knowing the path forward, and you cannot divide a wetlands application.
Which makes sense, which is why we should tie it together. So, as far as I'm concerned, hopefully, that'll satisfy, satisfy the committee, and certainly satisfies, satisfies me, as long as we separate the two projects, as you suggest. That's the main interest. The main points I would like to emphasize, because I don't think we should hold back one to, or delay for the other one, equally work and work them to moving forward hard. So, thank you. Mr. Scher.
But Joe, I'm, Joe, I'm a little confused by what you said. There's Part One that includes part of the construction of this road, it's essentially a parking lot, it's like the first half of the road, right? I'm trying to, I'm trying to just be clear what the committee.
Well, you asked a question, I'll answer your question.
What the committee voted on.
The answer to your question was, that was the best place to put the handicap parking.
So, the committee did say, build that?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay, so they said, build the first part of the road?
No.
Because that's, that's.
They said, build handicap parking.
Yeah, but the, okay, but the way that got implemented is build the first half of the road, right?
No, that's not, that's not accurate at all.
I'm sorry, maybe, maybe I'm confused. The road is in two parts, right? There's the part that goes out to the, right? Which is, build that part now, right? Which makes a lot of sense, right? Can you, can you go back to your bigger chart?
Maybe, Russ, you can describe the difference between the driveway and a road.
I'm sorry, you're saying, Russ, you've always planned this road, right? And at one point, it had a circle, a bus circle, it's been, there's been 50 incarnations of that thing, right? But now, we're essentially back where we started, right? Which is, directly from the parking lot, relocate the tennis courts, build a road out to the post-road, right? That's what that is, right?
Yep.
And it, but it says, in Part One, build the half to the left, and in Part Two, build the half to the right. Is that right?
Yeah, except the part to the left is the handicap parking.
Right, and, and part of the road, right?
It, it has a drive lane.
Yeah, okay.
You can figure just the way the high school parking lot, so you can figure.
Okay, so it's, so this kind of moves the road along a little bit, right?
A little bit, but allows, what we're trying to do is get away from getting good quality handicap parking near the fields.
Yeah.
And allow you to do the next part if you want to, without unbuilding anything.
Yeah, right, great.
Or spending any dollar twice.
Okay, so my question to Joe was, Joe, the committee fully supports this, is that right?
This being the handicap parking, yes.
Well, did they vote on Part One and Part Two, as Russ proposed, or?
The only difference that the committee changed is, is the idea of moving the visitor's bleachers and the visitor's building to Part Two, because we didn't have the information about wetlands approval at that time.
Oh, okay, okay.
Otherwise, that's exactly what the committee approved. I see a lot of.
They had, they had in their voted plan, I guess is what you're saying. They had Part One plus the visitor bleachers and the visitor room.
Yes.
Okay, and you've suggested slicing that up a little bit differently?
Right.
For all the reasons you've articulated.
Yes, that's all.
Okay.
That's really the only thing new for the committee from tonight, is a slightly different way of parsing the two, the two parts.
Ms. Downey. Because just to clarify what you were saying, so basically, the plan of what to ultimately do in a perfect world is what the committee voted on, and it's just a question of the staging for various approvals, and what's needed, and finances, correct?
We're not going to stage it though.
What?
We don't want to stage it.
There's a microphone, so you got to.
I mean, staging from an orderly fashion of, because we have, if we have to get wetlands approval for a portion of the project, to do the portion that doesn't require the wetlands first.
That's correct. We just, we don't want to stage it, we want them both simultaneously. I don't care how they have to.
Right, with the understanding that some of it's going to take longer, just because of the processes.
That's correct.
Quite honestly, actually, doing it the way you proposed, Russ, leaves the visitor bleachers in place, so that if you have the home. bleachers in place so that if you have the home bleachers out of order, you still have the visitor bleachers to use for a while.
Right. Our, our rough estimate is they have at least five years of useful life.
Okay. Oh, Ms. Hirsch.
Just--
No, it's a little different.
In terms of timing, if you wanted to talk a little bit in an ideal world, knowing that it's not always an ideal world, that if, if we vote next Thursday night to go ahead, what is the timing sequence you would foresee optimistically, pessimistically, realistically? You give us all.
So much of this depends on planning and zoning and the MI process that we would want to do a little bit more homework with that. And, you know, a motivated group of people who want you to replace your bleachers fast, there's no reason why this couldn't happen spring, summer. If we get tied up in a lot of things with the part one, you're not going to want to take them out in the fall. So that's why we, we do believe time is of the essence and we want to try and streamline that part one as much as possible so you get new bleachers in place. The buildings, even if, if the buildings are designed, the buildings, you should never expect to have the buildings fully functional for September. But bleachers are prefabricated and if everybody was really working together and cooperating, that would be our goal because this has been going on for a while.
Ms. Hirsch.
So I know that, yeah, I'm really loud, I'm sorry. I know there's been a lot of discussion back and forth about the secondary egress to and from our school. I know it's slightly different on this plan, so I just, you mentioned having had brief discussions, I think, with the DOT. For this plan to do, do this, is it, that secondary access road is not wide enough to have two-way traffic, is it?
It is.
Oh, it is? Okay.
It's just like the drive lanes in the high school. It's, you know, we, as a group decided to call it a driveway. It's not a road, it's a driveway. But as a parking on the side, it's just like the drive lanes in the high school parking lot. But it is important that you have a minimum of 20 feet and then 24 really allows two-way traffic and the committee felt if it's worth doing a 20, it's worth doing a 24.
So the question that I had was, I, we've, I know we've, I had asked Tony, who I know was going to reach out to you about this, but, you know, have we approached the state as to what their thoughts would be to give us access to the post road? And if so, have they given us any indication as to what, what they would allow? And if not--
Our team has, and your team has. So you've hired a civil engineering firm to do a traffic study, independent of our work. And coincidentally, that's the same civil engineer working with us on the Cardinal Stadium project. They, they talked to DOT. It's important to note that this is an existing curb cut. We're not proposing a new opening to, to post road. You have this now. It's always been thought of as only being a right turn in and right turn out. In a Connecticut DOT, like most regulatory agencies, will not give you any determination until you give them a full and detailed application. But the initial discussion was, I don't see why we wouldn't let you continue to use a curb cut you have for a reasonable purchase.
Ms. Stowe.
My good, Erin, okay. I appreciate, Russ, that you pointed out what we had voted on a while ago with option B because this sort of budget creep was bothersome to me initially when I saw the 6.6 to 10.6 to 11.4 as of yesterday and now 11.9. But you did, it was good to remind us that at one point we had voted on 17, like--
And even when you had the 6.6, there was a second phase to that that's not shown on the--
So, but the total rate is now 11.9 versus 17.
Right.
So what's, what's the 5 million difference?
The buildings are a lot smaller. It's been a lot of downsizing. There's not the big turnaround circle. We're not doing a lot of rock removal. We're leaving a lot of the existing topography around the field undisturbed. A lot of people like it. They sit on it and it's part of the character. So the whole thing has been scaled back a little bit because everyone was concerned about funding.
Yeah, no. It's a huge difference and I think we should, like, I think it's really important that you pointed that out because otherwise if you look at this, you sort of, at least mine's always a little bit--
I was just going to say, I mean, I've been on the committee for 42 months. It was also a $35 million--
Oh, yeah, no, I remember, I remember voting on a part one. This was sort of the, option B was the middle of the road at the time.
Right. And there was also, there was a need that was asked for by the teacher committee person that was on the original committee who wanted more educational space. So we actually took out educational space because we were asked to by the BET and the Board of Ed. But there was a second, a second story on the entryway that had a complete workout and rehabilitation area for athletes that we could also use because there's a workout room that's the size of a classroom. I don't know if you've seen it, by the little ballet bar at the high school. And so they were asking for more ed space. But I think that they've been working on using the home side when it's not used by 60 or 80 football players as a large size for some educational space and other things. Is that right, Russ?
I don't know what current plan is for team tracing.
We asked the committee to be here, Peter. Ms. Kowalski.
So with the location of that egress, is that next to just for, should I have the concept in my mind, is that near the, the bus stop that's on the road? And then has there been any discussion with the Connecticut DOT regarding the need for possibly having to put in another traffic light? I know that that's been raised in prior discussions that another egress on the post road would potentially require another traffic light, which everyone is not for, at least that was the opinion that was expressed.
I don't think anybody's for it, so no, it wasn't discussed with DOT. There's, the number of lights right there, it really would not work. So that's why right turn in, right turn out is the best option.
And that's the proposal. The proposal would be that we would put in front of DOT is right in, right out, and that's it.
Their concern generally is that people don't follow that.
You have to put something--
Yeah, so you have to do what they call a port shop shaped island to force them to go to the right. But it's a very wide road, so you can still turn in it if you disobey. That's part of the process and, you know, right turn in, right turn out, as we all know, is allowed in many places. It would work there.
Ms. Downey.
So just to understand, with that space during a non-stadium event, is it going to be open or closed for parking? Like if we're not, if it's not, you know, just a regular school day? I mean, I guess that's part of the question, right?
I think that's something that has to get worked out probably with DOT. Right? If you're looking at it for emergency access only, if you're using it for game day, if you're using it for school parking.
Joe, the committee, I'm going to ask you because you're our representative, so I hope you will speak for the committee to the board, right? Did the committee vote this whole plan with all of these elements in it? I mean, did you, it's your last committee meeting because you're saying we took a vote, they took a vote, and I heard it was unanimous for this entire plan this way with all these parts in it. Is that correct?
That's correct. And I said after we voted on that, that we tried to separate the two projects because there's still a lot of debate to be held or had regarding the road and now what is the wetlands project of the visitor's side bleachers.
But there's no debate in the committee about that, right? Because the committee is saying, that's what I'm trying to get clear, the committee is saying, we are asking the BOE, the full board, you're asking, is our, your committee unanimously is saying, please build that full road when you're done with this project.
The, what is, separating the two projects, I'm supporting voting positively for phase one, which is project number one. And I truly believe there's a lot of debate yet to be had on what is our project two. So I would suggest, my suggestion to the board is that we still have a lot of dialogue to be held regarding the second phase.
I'm, I'm on a different, I'm on a different question. I'm sorry.
That's right. It's always hard to follow you.
There's scope here for phase, part one, and there's scope for part two, right? It says do these things in part two and do these things in part one.
Right.
Right? Together, it's the whole project. You put those two things together, it's the whole project, correct?
Oh, yes, yes, is the answer.
So my question was, did the committee vote and is unanimously and is recommending to the board, regardless of what the sequencing is, do everything that's in part one and do everything that's in part two?
Yes, yes.
The vote was in support of the plan. This discussion after that was that we're going to discuss it amongst the board to break up the two projects.
Hmm, okay.
I just want to acknowledge the members of the committee that are, that are here or participated. Thank you for your hard work. I know we, we called on you to kind of clean up what would have been going on for a long time. I also want to thank Chief Hevy for coming out tonight. And I know you probably have somewhere else that you'd rather be. If there's anything you want to add, I'd let you do it now, so. We've got a microphone.
Thanks. Again, we had our physical security personnel look at it, our traffic people look at it, and we've talked to the, you know, again, we're just seeing the last final part of this, but we think that it'll be okay. And we're work, we'll again, work with what's required to provide the DOT, ConDOT, with the information they need from us and then of course, you know, setting it up to, to work. So again, we, we're, our, one of our concerns was parking adjacent to the home stadium and that was, that was taken out of this final plan. And that was one of the major concerns our physical security experts had. So with us, we don't really have any, any issues with, with the plan. I don't know if anybody has any questions for, for the police part of it, but again, this will add a lot more improved security, safety to the, an event at the stadium once it's, it's complete. So that's, that's a positive from us.
Ms. Stowe.
So just to be clear, since there's like 1,000 people from the BET here, we are asking for 7.6 or 8.8 right now? Number one is my first question. Less the 3.9 that we already have in there? Yes?
Based on, based on the charge to the committee, you asked the committee to study how to get everything in place, including the visitor's bleachers and a visitor's side building. So I believe your request would be for a total of 8.8 in two parts.
8.8 in two parts. So then we are fine with our current request in our 2021 submitted budget plan.
I would also point out, if you don't want to ask for permission for the road and moving the tennis courts, we just really need to analyze it for the purposes of the wetlands approval.
Right.
You don't have to build it. But we're going to have to analyze its impact on the wetlands to get anything done within the regulated area. You can talk about how that should be played.
So I guess let me, let me see if I can, let's put this back at you to make sure I understand. The recommendation is to follow this plan, but using the phases you suggest, which is home visitor, home and visitor side separately. The visitor's side would include the potential road back over to the high school with the idea that while you may start both, start the application process at once, technically they're two different applications.
That's right.
So planning and zoning would be able to move on the home side work and the other work would be pending while we wait for inland wetlands, while we wait for Connecticut DOT or whatever else we might need.
Exactly. Usually you submit the planning and zoning and they do an initial review and they say, okay, you're going to get a referral here, you're going to get a referral there, and when you have those, you come back. And our concern is with wetlands in the part one, the replacement of bleachers is tied up for wetlands impact and has nothing to do with it.
Right, so you do that one separately.
Exactly.
Right.
But the idea is to, to start them simultaneously, but they will work on their own tracks?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Kowalski.
They don't have to be. But, I mean, the board said in their charge that you wanted to get the visitor's side bleachers done at the same time, so that's what we're responding to.
And I think the, the other thing we talked about though was, you go down the road of making sure you're going to get it approved by DOT, so before you really spend true money starting to do work, you would go and have those conversations to know that you'd be able to move forward with phase two. And that's why you start the waterways conversation, inland wetlands conversation as well.
Right, but even if you weren't able to put the road in, it's still the best place for the handicap parking.
That's a good point.
So you, no harm, no foul. You put in excellent handicap parking, which you need for an event. You have thousands of people out there.
Ms. Kowalski.
So Peter, just to clarify on your part though, we're going to need DOT approval for phase one because you're still going to have that egress for phase one.
You know, we, we need to get with the traffic people and DOT. I think that as a courtesy, you should tell them what's going on, but you're basically restoring a use that had been there earlier in part one, which is emergency access, which is where it is now. And there used to be handicap parking in the ground at the bottom. So I think Connecticut DOT is saying, so you can tell me that you have an existing driveway that you want to continue to use the way you used to use it. But, and I think that's about all the discussion will be because there's no new modifications proposed to it. In the part two, I think you need to do a traffic flow analysis, you're going to have to look at the port shop island thing, you're going to have to analyze the post road traffic. It's going to be a thoughtful, more normal process whenever you change your traffic pattern, which is likely to take some time.
Ms. Hirsch.
So the plan is as suggested here, part one, part two. We'll expedite actually getting this all taken care of because, I mean, we've been talking about this for a long time and definitely, I mean, we've heard from the public, it needs to be done. But I just wanted to make sure that, it's also important to note that the most traffic we have coming in and out of the stadium is for football games. Most of the other teams that play in the stadium during the season, you're not going to have as much traffic. I mean, do you see that that's going to be a concern? Would we still be able to use the stadium? Not, you know, if, if we're doing some of the work, would we, the students will still be able to use the field for any of the games if we have one side of the bleachers open versus the other?
Yeah, the field and track should be able to be fully utilized throughout the courses.
So splitting it as, this way would actually still allow for use?
That's right.
Other discussion from the board? I just want to turn to the committee. I don't know if there's anything anybody wants to add. Mr. Scher.
Go ahead.
Oh.
It's on.
I'd like to add that the committee did see this plan beforehand, but we didn't see it broken into two parts. So this is the first time we're actually, we're seeing this as a two-part project. I, I think it's a good idea because we need to get those bleachers done. We're going to have another group of kids go through the high school without having the use of, of a quality stadium. And so in order to get that done faster, I think, you know, as Russ pointed out, go to wetlands, you know, that's going to take a little bit longer. We need to start with the project, the home side field, and get it done. And then focus on getting a road or a driveway, or whatever you want to call it, a lane on that site, on our site, because, you know, folks, I'm living with 2,850 students every day and if we ever have to leave that building in a hurry, there's only two ways out, okay? We need a third way out. So I don't want us to lose focus on the, on the road, but I think this is a, a good plan to go forward with. And I also think that where the handicap parking is on this plan, we've had that for years before we dumped all that dirt there for, the clean dirt there for the, the possible remediation of the field. So that was always used as, as parking for football games anyway. So I just want to ensure that we get our kids into that stadium, into that, onto the, into those bleachers as soon as we can. And Russ, I have a question. If we're not going to work on the visitor's bleachers simultaneously, then where would the other team, not that I care about the other team that much, but where, where would the other team's dressing room be if we don't have, if we're just designing the home side for our team?
Russ, could I jump in a second on that one?
Where is it now? Well, I understand that, Joe, but I, you know, so--
Well, there, there is a storage room in the building under the home side bleachers that could be temporarily used for the visitors if needed. And it's not uncommon that you see tents used, so if you have a level spot, you could, if you so accommodated, put a dent up for them.
Ms. Scher.
Russ, can you talk about the, now I'm into the details. I, I, I'm sorry, I feel like Groundhog Day with this. This is almost where we were last June, and now we've burned another seven months on this thing, and we're back where we started again. You know, the, the lighting carriages, we're under a stipulated agreement to take the lighting carriages up and down, and we're not doing that right now, so we're out of legal compliance. How's that going to be addressed when we put up the new ones?
Our charge is to replace the fixtures with fixtures that can go up and down.
So you're comfortable, we have that, because it looked like on that diagram, they looked very fixed.
Yeah, well, that's a render.
Okay, so, but the, but did we, we budgeted?
The idea is they go up and down, and that's what's been budgeted, and we have a lighting designer or lighting engineer working on it, and I can tell you it's not an easy thing.
Okay, I, I'm just going to tell my colleagues on the board, maybe I've just been doing this too long. I've been serving in town government now 16 years. I spent a lot of time in this room with the RTM. I'm in full support of let's go do part one. I think it's a really bad idea to go after part two at the same time, because whether you like it or not, we can live in our little world, where in our heads, those two things are like separate, but when it goes to the BET, it goes to the town, it goes to the RTM, it goes to all these other things, trust me, those two things are going to be 100% linked. And I am frustrated with this whole thing, because I lived through MISA. MISA was supposed to happen for, I don't know, less than 20 million bucks, and it was supposed to happen in three years. That didn't happen, all right? It went on and on and on, and in the end, it cost double the amount. I don't think that will happen here, but I, I lived through that, there's, where's Laura Erickson? With the scars on her back on that, a bunch of other people who, who lived through that, the pact is beautiful and it got built, but it took a really, really long time. And the lesson I take away from that is, don't try to eat the whole turkey at once. Put it into bite-sized meals, and let's try to get things done in pieces that we can actually get done. I love this with part one. It's almost back where we started, but it's a more refined plan, and it has better alignment. It costs a bunch more, to Ms. Stowe's point. I'm a little curious how we went from four to almost double the cost, and we didn't really change the scope that much. But I, I, I'm fine with it, what it is. I would hope the board would just take that up, approve that, push that project forward, get the home side bleachers built with the team rooms underneath, with the handicap parking, and let's go to town on that, let's go through each of the bodies that we need to get approved. We clearly need to disclose to all these other parties that this is our grand plan, but the idea of doing these things simultaneously, you're essentially, this, we can live in fantasy land that we're only asking for eight million, and we're really not asking for this other money, we're just asking for the planning money for it, and so on and so forth. When it gets to these other bodies, I promise you, they won't see phase one and phase two anymore. They're just going to see one big giant project and one big giant number. So, I'd like to be wrong, because I'd love to get all of this done, but based on my experience, I don't think I am wrong with this. So, I'm glad it's here. Thank you to the committee for, you know, retreading the earth again. But, you know, I'd like to go get this done. I have ringing in my ears, I'm fascinated with my, with my good friend, the headmaster. He was begging us less than 12 months ago, could you just build, rebuild bleachers and get it done right away? Right? And I, I haven't forgotten that, and I'm kind of on the, let's go get these bleachers built, with the team rooms underneath, and the GAF is at the table, hunky fat, you know, we get handicap parking, which we don't really have, that's overdue, let's just go get that done. And then whatever comes after that, is whatever comes after that, is kind of how I'm looking at it. Just my own view.
Ms. Hirsch, and then Chief.
I was just going to point out that we had members of all the town bodies participatory on that committee, so I assume that they added their points of view when this was in discussion as to part one, part two, and the funding, and they agreed on the overall idea of the project, at least the committee members, but they are representative of all the town body.
Chief Hevy.
Right, I wanted to say this before Mr. Scher responded with the breakup, and I don't, so I don't want to feel like I'm competing with that, but I think this, there's a strong safety concern to consider the, the connection to the back road, to the parking lot.
Sure.
And again, we have looked at things to address the school's safety concerns for a long time. I only have 34 years, I got even less than Ralph does. But, but I think, looking at that, we do, we do have to look at, you know, how much longer do we have to wait? Do we have, by separating it another year, you know, I'll, I'll be retired probably by the time it, it gets in if we keep spreading it out. But I think it's, it's a pretty well-set up plan for considering, with my experience with Connecticut DOT and some of the other approval agencies, it's going to take some time for step two, phase two to get going, so to get phase one going.
Sorry, I couldn't quite hear you. Could you?
It's my old phone. That's all.
Thank you. Any other discussion, Ms. Downey?
I don't know if tonight's the right night to ask about it, but just, we had talked about, the Greenwich Athletic Foundation had talked about making a pledge. I don't know, Joe, if there's, were discussions as part of that process, whether that's still part of the analysis, whether that pledge is still out, out there. I think that would be helpful, even if you don't know tonight, if we could find out before our meeting on the 16th.
If Mr. Burton is here, he was actually the GAF member of the committee, and if you'd like to step up to the microphone, sir, we'd love to hear from you.
Excellent.
I'm a little under the weather, so I'll keep this brief. No, I think we're generally, and again, there's a lot of different voices in that room, we're generally supportive of this plan. We do share a lot of the concerns of the time delay, I think the time is the most precious thing that Ralph brought up, we don't want to see another class or two go through this. So, decoupling the plan, we thought made a lot of sense, but we are in support of the road, we, we just think, well, the driveway, we just want this to bog down the stadium project. In terms of financial support, that has not changed. I think we are very supportive and we love, again, we were very worrisome about going to public without a plan that did not have a definitive timeframe, by post, by hopefully segregating these two projects, and we have a briefer timeframe, we can go to the public so raising money. So, we are, excuse me?
What's your number?
We, we committed to at least a million dollars. Thank you. No, and again, this is long overdue, and we're fully supportive of this, we just wanted to get this thing done and move on to the next project, because there's many more things to get done.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. All right, other discussion from the board, committee members carrying on, I know their sign-up sheets on the lobby. And again, the board is going to take this up for an action item at our meeting on Thursday, January 16th. Ms. Kowalski is going to check me on the calendar. All right, 16th? Okay, 16th.
16th, you want to bring this up?
Yeah. Thank you, thank you.
All right, so we're going to move on to the next portion of our agenda, which is public comments.
Peter?
Oh, yes?
I think Stephanie wants to. Steph?
One quick question, or a comment. Laura Erickson, also from BET, did participate on this committee, so to Peter's point, to Mr. Scher's point that, about funding and how it'll be done and splitting it up, the intention was that it would go through as one, and whether they were doing it simultaneously, or there would be delay on the side due to wetlands and/or DOT for the driveway, that the BET would support doing it as a plan, so part one, part two. So regardless of how it looks like it was broken up, our discussions during that committee, it was that BET would be supportive of simultaneously doing that. So that is something we want to note, that, you know, that is what your concern is, and that is the reason why we feel it's very important, for various reasons, to move forward on both fronts at the same time. We're not believing that obviously on the stadium side that we'll have any problem or hiccup, but we'd hate to be waiting for this to be done to then start the other, when the access, the driveway is very important as well. That's just the point we wanted to make sure you knew.
Thank you. All right, so with that, we're going to move on to our public comments. Speakers get three minutes, you give a 30-second warning, we ask if you adhered to the three minutes. So first up, Maureen Bonanno and Terry Lamontje, followed by, and I'm going to mispronounce the name, I think it's Ernie? I can't read the last name, because I didn't put my glasses on.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. As the Greenwich High School PTA continues to support this long overdue and unheeded improvement to make Cardinal Stadium a more inviting, safe, accessible facility for our student, athletes, parents, and visitors. ADA accessibility is essential. For families, friends, relatives with disabilities, there should be no barriers to having them attend events at the stadium. Also, safety is essential. Proper emergency access should be constructed for the safety of all those who attend the events at the stadium, as well as for the safety of our students on a daily basis, given the size of the school. We've also heard from many of our parents that the lack of cell phone service and Wi-Fi service in the parking lots and fields is a huge safety issue. We hope you will address this concern as well. This is something that we haven't heard discussed, but it's been very on the foremost of our parents' minds, so we really encourage you to maybe, one parent actually said, put it in the, in the bleachers or somewhere, just a cell phone tower or something, I don't know how that works, but anyway. We continue to, or we support the proposed option presented by KGND Architects and supported by the committee. The proposed option seems to meet all of the goals of the project, and to help the project move forward as swiftly as possible, splitting the project into two parts makes sense, as long as we proceed with part two in a timely manner. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak, and we look forward to seeing the Cardinal Stadium project move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have a hard time reading this. Ernie Sharma, maybe?
That's correct.
Thank you. I'm waiting on my new glasses. It's not your writing, it's my glasses.
Thank you. My name is Art Sharma, I'm in District Eight, I live in Cosco, but I'm a very active personal fitness user of Greenwich High School facilities, track and tennis, and also make a point, anywhere I go in Greenwich, five miles or less, if possible, if it doesn't rain cats and dogs, I go by bike. It's just like to make some comments, but maybe those gentlemen can also provide a couple of answers right away. Number one point, this outlet, outline does not really convince me well enough about traffic circulation. Where's the quick drop-off or pickup area? I'm a bit concerned that the ADA area might be used as a quick drop-off or pickup thing. That's not the idea, but we should really encourage that in the days of Uber, Lyft, Miniman, Shovel, and these type of things, that we can improve the flow. Maybe that's part of two B or so, but I'm missing that point, and I think it's a fair and a big one, because quick in and quick out is a very much demanded feature in Greenwich. Number two, I see no biking lanes, and I see no biking parking, and I think going to a sports facility with bikes will make a lot of sense in 2020, in the next 10 years. Number three, eight tennis courts will be replaced. I'd like to know how long will that take, and when will they be taken out, and then they're back? Could that be answered right away, please?
All right, this is comment, you can talk to him afterwards.
Okay. And then, in that respect, I'm a bit concerned the tennis courts going more to like water and so on, that this could be solid ground issues. I like the Greenwich High School courts, because they're the best in town. Amazingly enough, they're best maintained, but amazingly enough, they're really correctly flat, and they don't paddle up like most other courts we have in town. So usually we build it right from the beginning, or we're not going to have great tennis courts, and that will again be an impact on quality. Number four, public restrooms. I just wonder how that's going to work, because as a tennis player, and given my age, it's nice to have public restrooms, and we don't want to go into the school buildings, because we don't belong there, so in a way, I'd like to see that the public restrooms remain available in a reasonable way, when other facilities can be used, track and tennis courts. And number five, and that's Project 4B, my understanding is that the tracks are not 400 meters long, but a different length, so if we talk about Cardinal Field improvement, maybe we can correct common big length so that.
30 seconds.
400 meter distance, but most importantly, everybody involved, I want to thank for everyone's contribution and hard work on this and resting forward. So thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rick Lowe, followed by Brian Paldunas.
Hi there, my name is Rick Lowe, I live in Old Greenwich. I'm a member of Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and I'm also on the Hamill Rink Reconstruction The way this option has laid out is great, it matches tennis court configuration from earlier, from an earlier version I saw. When we get to rebuilding Hamill Rink, it's going to solve a big problem, the current rink is out of code in many ways, the facility is behind times. But one thing will not be solved, and that is that we don't have enough ice time at that rink to satisfy the demand. So, on an earlier plan, the tennis courts were configured, and it was actually an outline drawn, that said ice hockey rink, or skating rink, at one point in time. I urge you to, in this lower left-hand corner, consider building the courts in that manner, so that you could use it for multipurpose. It could be turned inside a bubble, but the technology exists today, that during the winter sports season, you could have the high school teams practicing here, which would open up a lot of ice time at Hamill Rink for other users. When those other users came, they would be paying probably a lot more for ice time than the high school teams are now, so it's a revenue add at the end of the day for the town. I think that's it. I graduated from the building in 1971 with Ralph. Three, three of my kids went through there. Since I'm on the Parks and Rec Board, one other thing we need in town is a full-size baseball kettle or the likes. Please, someday. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, Brian Paldunas, followed by Ashley Cole.
Good evening, Superintendent Jones, Chairman Bernstein, members of board, parents, and community. Excuse me. My name is Brian Paldunas, First Vice President of PTA Council, substituting for Cricket Diamond. I like to say Cricket's in the Caribbean, sunning herself, but in reality, she's got the flu, so she sent her regards, but not her germs. PTA Council has consistently advocated for restrooms, changing facilities, and ADA accessibility for all stadium facilities, including parking, bleachers, restrooms, and press box, and we are happy to see these elements included in this proposal. We continue to support the full second daily use means of egress to the post road from the Greenwich High School campus. We view this as necessary to improve traffic flow, and to improve security and life safety for the students and for the surrounding neighbors. You have to bear with me here, I edited this about 10 times while I was sitting there. We are encouraged to see that this is contemplated in the proposal, but it sounds like there's a lot of work still to be done to make that a reality. We would be concerned if there is anything in the plan as approved that would preclude a daily use second access. We recognize and encourage the need for the involvement of all impacted parties in this, in the plan, including the neighbors on both sides of the post road, as highlighted in the committee's meeting, meetings, December 5th, at 1:00. So there's a recognition already there by the committee that the outreach to the neighbors needs to be done. We thank everyone for their involvement, and thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is Ashley Cole, followed by Elizabeth Dempsey.
Hi there, I'm Ashley Cole, and I live in Leavenhill. I'm Ashley Cole, and I live in 11 Hillside. Many of you had signs in my yard. And there's my neighbor, Elizabeth Dempsey, and we helped start the Selectments Committee for Traffic Safety on Hillside Road. If you've driven downhillside road, you know what we're talking about. This study, which was actually required by law by the MESA variance many years ago, was only recently completed, and this study should be released in the next few weeks. It details many of the safety issues present on Hillside Road. Every day, neighbors and students suffer from safety and quality of life issues, because we have a school that supports 3,000 people and only one form of egress. I'd also like to give a shout out to Chief Hievi. He was on our committee, and his fine policeman, but they can't patrol Hillside Road 24/7. We insist, as neighbors, on a second egress for Greenwich High School, for the benefit and safety of this community, the neighbors, the students, and indeed, the entire town. Many years ago, when GHS was created, these properties were taken by eminent domain, and this neighborhood was promised a residential dome in perpetuity. Lately, the current situation at the high school is not indicative of protecting our residential feeling and neighborhood. We support this plan. We want a beautiful high school for our town. We want a beautiful neighborhood, and we want to protect our fragile historic environment, which is actually part of the POCD. These two don't have to be separate. We can do this together, as a community. Beautiful neighborhood, safe neighborhood, great high school. We can do it. We are concerned about putting these two things together or separate. We want to make sure that this egress goes through and is not ignored. We're a little burned, because the MESA project did not work out so well for us. We were promised more trees, landscaping, traffic, and parking. We got none of this. So, we would like you to remember our fragile historic neighborhood, our neighbors, and to please take the burden off of Hillside Road. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Elizabeth Dempsey, followed by Bill Drake.
Hi, I think Ashley kind of spoke for a lot of us neighbors, so I won't repeat it. I might just add two things. Again, I'm Elizabeth Dempsey, and I'm at 21 Hillside, and I participated in the Parking and Traffic Committee, and so we all know that there's been an increase in students having cars. The demand for students to be able to drive themselves is large and understandable, but I just would ask you to look at the larger, not just athletic needs of this. I am for a strong high school. I am for making this high school be a draw to young families considering coming to Greenwich, and I want strong athletic programs that deliver kids to the best schools, despite the fact that, you know, I'd rather not pay for the taxes. I would pay more taxes for a beautiful stadium, so I'm in support of it. But it's not just about athletics, and the fact that Greenwich, obviously, I'm interested in it, because it will greatly help Hillside Road, but the fact that we have such an amazing high school, large population, a wealthy population, we don't have a second form of egress, is frightening to me, and as a board, I would think that that would be, in addition to the stadium bleachers, that your security is first and foremost. I don't really feel like I'm hearing a lot of that. So, I would also echo all the concerns of everybody else who stood up and said that daily, daily egress is something that should be put on the table, and so I advocate for a second, for simultaneous, but please don't lose sight of phase two, because I'm getting the sense, I'm hearing it, like it's kind of, wait, did you vote as a committee on all of that? And I think you did. So, I hope that you do include a simultaneous start to that. I don't think it's a lot of money, and I think the parents are concerned, and it's really your job first and foremost. So, thanks so much for listening.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Bill Drake. Hey, Bill.
I just want to comment that you, with Pangea and Ee, did a very strategically well-thought-through thing with foresight when you drew those tennis courts with the known possible seasonal rink to go here. There's a big demand for ice time in this town. It's, you know, one of your extraordinary strengths at Greenwich High is your swimming and water polo teams. That is partly driven by the fact that you have a pool, a wonderful facility, on your campus. If we were to build an ice facility on your campus, you'd be in a position to say you'd be one of the few, or maybe the only, public high schools with a skating facility for your teams on campus. This is a very popular sport at Greenwich High. You have the potential for boys varsity hockey, boys JV hockey, girls varsity hockey, girls JV hockey, and if we put you, put a tennis court, put a seasonal rink where those tennis courts are not being used in January, and the rink not being used in July, it's perfectly complimentary, and it enables us to free up time at the Hamill Rink, which we sell to other users in town for $500 an hour. Multi-year contract, multi-month contract, that we can attain at Hamill for other users in town quickly gets into a very large amount of money, which we then can devote to building this facility on your campus for your students. So, that was very well done. It's not a decision for today, but keep it alive, let us work on it together. Thank you.
Thank you. Sounds like Bill's paying for it.
You just committed to vote for it, you're being d.
We only need six more. All right, is there anybody else that wishes to address the board? Mr. Crawl, why don't you come on down, and Tom?
I wonder what you want to talk about. It's already been said.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of points. I've been part of a lot of the committee meetings and involved, obviously, the GAF. I think we have to understand a couple of things here and take a little bit of a step back. When we met in June, the, the stating committee met in June, and I should say, I believe it was Dr. Jones's first meeting, actually, we had town attorney John Wetmore at the meeting at that time, and Mr. Wetmore was very clear in that meeting and stated that if we began the application process that day, or that month, that we would be 12 to 16 months before we had the necessary permits to construct anything on that site. So, I appreciate the energy that Russ is bringing and trying to move this forward as quickly as possible, but I think in a real world scenario, in knowing the process, I don't think there's anybody in this room that's been through more of the process in this town than I have, and from both waterfront, wetlands, building, zoning, zoning, ZBA, as you name it, I've been through them all on multiple different occasions, I can tell you that the process is going to take some time, and we need to be prepared for that. So, I caution everybody not to get too excited about seeing building permits for this spring. It's going to take some time to get that done. With that being said, I don't believe that we should be removing the visitor side bleachers from the project. The bleachers do sit within the wetlands limit line, but wetlands are determined by soil content, not the wetlands limit line. They draw that line for a hundred feet around any water course that runs through any property. Greenwich High School as a site has wetlands on it, and thereby is entitled to wetland review, no matter what you do. So, that's gonna come into play, no matter how we go about it. The soils in the area of the visitor side bleachers are not wetland soils. The water course runs through a concrete culvert in that area. The soils above it are as dry as they are. When we did these, the lights 20 years ago, it was a simple sign off for wetlands, but wetlands applications can be done simultaneously, as well as planning zoning applications. I believe we should get the stadium together, get the stadium done. There's an economy to scale, there's savings to doing all the bleachers together, to being able to bid it out under one contractor, to do a lot of different estimating and designs, and everything that should be considered in a comprehensive stadium project.
30 seconds.
Thank you. I believe that what also should be done here is that that part be put back into phase one of the stadium, of the visitor side, into the entire stadium project, and that board, as it goes forward, should consider forming two different committees at this point in time. One to focus on the stadium, because I believe that can move on forward, as Russ has said. They have a lot of the design done, and we can push that. I believe you need another group that's going to focus on that second phase, that has the interest of the road and the bridges and everything.
Time.
We'll support that, as far as GAF and all this goes.
Thank you very much. Please introduce yourself.
Tom Agresta. It's interesting, because I was always a one-trick pony on this. I was always talking about how we perform the 40-yard track, it should be 400 meters, it should be eight lengths, but Ralph has graciously invited me to help with the building committee meetings, and I learned a lot more to this. I actually support what's going on here. I still think we should do the track in the same, from a phase. Why? Because I've lived here for, you know, 30 years, I know, like me, it may take five years. And remember, that's a facility that's not, not up to standard for our athletes. Really, this is more about the athlete than it is anything else. So, I'm gonna say it many times, we gotta get the facility right for the athletes, let them have the right facility, and then worry about the rest. By the way, did it cost less than $200,000 to do this? Maybe far less, because I think, last time I noticed, when we surfed the track, it was like $70,000, $80,000. So, it's really not expensive to do this, so I think we should do this. And I like the idea that I'm here about the hockey, so this is something new to my work and control. You know, that's something we can put in. That's not a bad idea. In fact, on the, on the field itself, you could, you know, like they have the winter classics at all these football stadiums, you could put something there, you know, temporary hockey. That's acceptable, but I think you got a lot of support from a lot of people in town here. I think you'd be surprised by some of the people that have to prove this. You gotta, I think you're gonna find support. And we fixed the track, how will it be supported? Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Julie Barra. I have a junior daughter, and I have a son and a daughter in eighth grade. All three of them are, well, high schoolers, definitely a three-sport athlete. The other two are probably going to be three-sport athletes. We will be using the facilities, but it's not only for the athletes. Graduation is coming, and it would be nice if we can also use the bleachers for graduation. The only, the reason I'm up here, the primary reason I'm up here, is because, like voting, I think it's a civic duty to encourage the good things that can happen in our community, you know, whether it's handicap access, which is very important, there are grandparents who want to come to the game, and they have a very difficult time coming, the safety issues, including cell tower, which is a revenue generator, although there's issues about, you know, break damage, and, and, you know, revenue generator, you know, all sorts of good things, transportation, all that. Please, 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 get this done as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if there's nobody to, nobody else that wishes to speak. Mr. Kelly, do you have a motion?
I would like the motion to adjourn.
All right, is there?
I'll second that.
Second from the birthday girl. All those in favor of adjourning? We adjourn. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
See you, Ms. Bone.
Bye.
Bye, Megan.
Bye, thank you.